October 28, 2020, this is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Through the flag of the United States of America, to your Republic, which stands foundation of God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, gentlemen, is old business and to approve the common vic license for Pinky's Realty Corp. DVA Blue Land Cafe. We approved the liquor transfer on November 12, 2019. The ABCC approved the liquor transfer on August 6, 2020. Mr. Korea, the Board of Health Agents been out there to inspect the kitchen. Everything's in compliance. Is there a motion to approve the common vic license and liquor license for Pinky's Realty Corp?
A motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. For us, on the new business, we, today's main purpose of the meeting was to approve special town meeting articles, approvals and review. So, gentlemen, we'll go through the articles one by one. I think it's important to note, the only available funds of free cash that we have is in the amount of $587,999. We couldn't just have one more dollar, to round that off to $588. Sewer retained earnings, I don't believe we have anything related to sewer as far as an article. Golf return earnings, which is their surplus, is $299,921. Water fund surplus is $1,019,459.11. Our capital fund, which is better known as the solar revenue fund, we have approximately $100,000. And our CPA fund, undesignated budgeted reserves, it looks like we have $238,289.49. So our first article, which is the big focus and the main reason for our special fall town meeting, as we, everybody's aware of, we're looking to put a new school roof on the Acushnet Elementary School. It says to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow, transfer from available funds in an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the school committee for the accelerated repair project at the Acushnet Elementary School for the partial replacement of the existing roof located at 800 Middle Road, Acushnet, Mass. Which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the town may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant that may be approved by and received from the MSBA will be the sole responsibility of the town. Any grant that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 1.57 in seven fourths, seven hundredths of a percent, 57.74% of eligible approved costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by MSBA. Gentlemen, we've had some discussion on how we're going to proceed with this. We've run some numbers, Ms. Hebert and I, and the Board had time to review those numbers. We, we have an opportunity here from MSBA. MSBA has granted us the grant thus far. We are eligible for the grant. I believe the maximum amount that they would carry for the MSBA of the total sum of $2,570,759. A maximum total facilities grant of $1,334,232 would be funded through a MSBA grant as long as all costs are considered eligible. I got here in my notes, leaving the town at roughly $1,236,527 remaining balance to be funded by the town of Acushnet. In the article, it does specify to that amount, to the penny, $2,570,759 for the purpose of paying the cost of the accelerator roof project. It does have some terminology, may be eligible. MSBA did approve the amount of the $1,334... Hold on a second. $232. Given all things considered, hopefully that'll be the case. And then the Board also had some discussion on that we would be funding this instead of doing a debt exclusion, which means we would be asking taxpayers to fund this over 20 years. The Board of Selectmen have decided to go the route of a 15-year finance plan, financing a million dollars, asking town meeting out of free cash possibly next spring to offset the remaining $232,000, whatever amount that we need from free cash to bring that borrowing to 1 million even. We can have some discussion later on about that and our next, in the spring about that. But we did say we would fund it through our solar revenue funds, which we would have roughly somewhere about $80,000 a year producing from our solar revenue fund. So, and when we ran the numbers on the 1 million borrowing for 15 years, we were roughly $83,000. I think it started at like 85, and then after a few years it dropped to like 83,000 for the subsequent years. So, and we have $100,000 in that fund now. So even if we don't reach that 80,000, we have three or $5,000 short. We could tap into this solar revenue cash fund that we have to continue paying off that without asking the taxpayers for a dime and additional taxes. Does that still stand with the Board?
So, we're gonna borrow a million dollars, 15 years, and the payments are about 80,000 a year.
83,000 bucks a year, 85, in the first few years drops to about 83. I don't have my finance papers in front of me, but I do remember it. Ms. Hebert, if you would like to correct me on that, I believe I'm correct in speaking on the 85,000 for the first few years and then drops to about 83,000. So, again, if we're at that point next year where we reassess our solar revenue and we reassess it, if we have a shortfall of whatever amount it may be, 5,000, 7,000 bucks, we're gonna, we possibly could be expending a little bit of money this year. Right now, tonight, the chief has a request for 15,000, but that would still leave us 85,000. So we could use that funds and we have more solar, I believe we have more solar farms coming on board. So, I think that we'll be able to do this without a problem. Ms. Hebert, the only question that I would ask you is, do we need to specify, I know we will talk about it on town meeting floor of how we will fund this, but when we do the borrowing, if we have a shortfall, would we be able to use other funds available other than the solar revenue fund to pay that debt off? Or would it be just solely? Because there's no, nothing in the vote that says we're using solar revenue funds. So at that point, I, when I read the article, the full motion, it seems like we have some flexibility on how we could fund it.
Yeah, we do.
We have Ms. Kristen Flynn. I don't know if Ms. Flynn or Ms. Paula Bailey is here. I don't know if you have any comments that you would like to make pertaining to the school roof article?
No, thank you very much for considering it. I just want to reiterate for anybody who may be interested that this is a program through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It's been about, oh, almost a two-year process to get to this point. We have complied and have been accepted at each step of the way, which culminated in the letter that Mr. Gaspar referenced approving us for the total facilities grant of $1,334,232 on August 26. So the next step is to get local approval and funding, which would be at town meeting. And I just want to reiterate that this is for a section of the Acushnet Elementary School roof. It's the original, the original section of the roof. The building was renovated about 20 years ago. So that part of the roof is not eligible for MSBA reimbursement, but this one that's just about 50 years old is eligible. And again, we've had the architects and engineers study the roof. We've had roof condition study. And the common point that was made is that the roof is past its useful life and it's on borrowed time. So it is more than enough, more than time to replace it. So we do appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions at all? Great. Thank you.
And Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
I have a note here from when we were working through this with the OPM. And it says, I have a note here, it's roughly 67,000 square feet of roof?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. The original roof condition study pointed to roughly 63,000, but that was a couple of years ago. And that was just a preliminary study. So when the architects came in and the project really got fully studied, it became 67,000.
Gentlemen, the only, the only concern that I have, not a concern about approving this article, I surely don't. With about roughly 50, I know they say we could go up to 57% reimbursement, but when I do the calculation, it falls down to about 52, 53% reimbursement, which is still a great rate. The only, I guess I'm a little nervous about the way building materials have escalated over the last several months. So they have an escalator in there that what they call the OPM bills in, what they call it?
Right.
Escalator inflation escalator. And it's only a small percentage, like 4%. So my only concern is if, if those building materials were to dramatically increase when we go out to bid and it is bid on, and I could see that coming back and saying, well, that was because prices of building materials have gone up exorbitantly. We're only approving a certain amount of dollars. So if that, if the bids come in and that amount is dramatically higher than the $2.57 million, I, I don't know where the project stands at that point. What I'm saying is, I'm concerned about the small escalator. In the normal times, 4% is adequate. But I do know that the prices of lumber and building materials, no matter what it is, could be PVC piping, the nature of the business right now, based on what I'm told and what I see out there in building materials, they're roughly up 50 to 75% right now, year to date. So that's a dramatic increase from what we see.
Right, right. I recall you discussing that as well in some of our meetings.
That was before the prices escalated due to COVID-19.
Right, and you were predicting that they may be escalating.
I did ask the question, in the case of, in the contingencies that we have here, could absorb some of this? I, I just, I want, I want to put it on the table so everybody understands this project and where we're at, where we could end up. Where if the, if the bids come in at 2.75 versus the 2.57, where does that leave us as a town, whether or not we continue going forward with the project? We have the right at that point to back out and say we can't provide the funding, or perhaps we need to know that before the spring town meeting. So hopefully this stuff will go out to bid and we'll have this number before our spring town meeting.
Right, so I would, my understanding is, is once the funding is approved, once the appropriation is approved, that's when we can start thinking about going out to bid. And the designer, next phase design, will be responsible, of course, for preparing the bid package, but I believe that's the timeline because we need to have, be ready to start construction as soon as the building's closed for the summer in June.
That is correct. The timelines are a little funky, but hopefully, I think the guy's name was Steve, the OPM guy? Nice gentleman. We had numerous conversations with joint conversations, you, myself, Ms. Bailey and Ms. Hebert. Hopefully, I'm just, I'm just putting up the warning flags because I know where the cost of materials are and it kind of scares the hell out of me. And I know that a lot of people that were proposing doing building projects, they halted those.
Well, let's hope that that's not the case because I may get back to my office on a rainy day like today and be heard that we do have more roof leaks. So it is, you know, it is unfortunate. I, I know I sent you guys the spreadsheet of all the repairs that we've made. So far this year, we've been pretty good. But again, the roof is 50 years old and it, we need to do something.
We do. I think that's been agreed upon by everybody.
Right, right.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there so everybody in TV land, people that may attend town meeting, we gotta lay it all out.
Correct.
And we'll figure that out, hopefully we'll figure that out when the bids come in. Hopefully the bids come in low. We don't, we don't know right now. And, and again, the OPM and the designers, that was, that's not picked by the town, that's picked by MSBA. That's the way MSBA operates, is they have the sole discretion of who the project managers are gonna be.
They, they let us know who our project manager is, who the architect is. It went through the schematic design phase, which is what we were involved with this summer. And it recently culminated, I believe they do a peer review by another architectural firm of the design. So we do have some preliminary reports on that as well. So it's very, it's a very prescribed process that, you know, the state has school departments to go through, of course, because they're dealing with a lot, a lot of money, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Article 1?
So moved.
Now, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking through the articles here, and it looks like the school department has one more. And it's very, it's the, the very end of the articles, like number 11? I'm just wondering, since Dr. Bailey's here, Kristen, we could maybe take this out of order and then they can get back to the school where they belong?
Good afternoon, Selectmen and Ms. Hebert.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you all. As you know, to make a long story short, we've had curriculum audits. Our curriculum is outdated in all air, all content areas. I thought today would be a nice opportunity for you to meet our, our new curriculum director, Carrie Stolpel. She does have some handouts and she will just be reviewing the specific content areas that we would be requesting for this particular town meeting. Does each have Carrie as well? No, I got her. Okay. Hi.
How you doing?
Hello, nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you, Carrie.
Carrie, I'm David.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, David.
So I hope the handouts helpful. There's a great need for curriculum here in Acushnet, and we're really targeting science reading and something called DRAs moving forward. The current plan for the science curriculum K through 8 was to purchase a green rated inquiry-based program that would provide consistency and experience in a spiraling curriculum that will reinforce and shore up the student learning experience. The available funds for this year limited us to a 5th through 8th grade adoption, and we are looking to extend our adoption for kindergarten through 4th grade. I attempted to kind of itemize out what we were looking for in the Amplify Science Curriculum to an amount of around $59,000. In reading as well, there is currently no adopted reading curriculum at the elementary school. We are looking to purchase potentially the My View Literacy Program or another green rated curriculum for the elementary school. We're looking to have something that fully aligns the standards and assessments and really supports a very rich literacy experience for our students. The funds that were provided to us for this year allowed us to purchase 5th through 8th grade, but we are now looking for a purchase for the kindergarten through 4th grade as well. And then the final request that we would love to have considered is something called DRA assessments, which are kits, and that stands for developmental reading assessments. These kits enable teachers to evaluate the independent reading level of their students as well as the instructional and frustration level. Comprehension and fluency are tracked along with their levels that they're at. The kits cost approximately $450, and we are looking to purchase potentially 35 kits.
So, quick question, because we've done it in the past before. I forget what curriculum we passed a couple of years ago. I mean, I think it was in the amount of roughly $50,000. I don't know how we got caught up funding curriculum out of articles and not having it built into a budget. And, so, and we don't have enough money to go around, that's for sure, for funding all the things that needs of the town. So I've looked at a couple of different things and, and without saying too much before we get involved with all the other ones, so we might just hold on, on the vote. And that was a simple one, the school roof, because it's not out of taxation. And we've had this discussion, so I don't know if the Board, I think we'll just go through them all and discuss them all before we do a vote. The, as far as curriculum goes, I mean, with COVID-19 being where it's at in partial in-class and not in-class and everything else, can I just ask this question is, for this calendar school year, and I, and I know you have something on here about the reading, and we talked about it at a finance joint meeting, the finance committee, Board of Selectmen and School Committee in last year's budgetary process. And I was kind of, I think a lot of people were disappointed on where our students are with reading deficiency. I think it's somewhere up near the realm of 60, 70% deficient in reading all the way up to the 7th grade. I'd have to go back and look at the tape, but I do remember some of this conversation. And I think that was extremely disappointing, so. In, in my world of philosophy, I guess I look at things and say, you can spend as much as you want, but the bottom line is, and we do spend quite a bit on education in this town, the bottom line is this, if I spend a dollar, I expect a return on my investment. And I'm not so sure that that's been happening the way it should be happening. And especially hearing that children are 60, 70% deficient in reading in the 6th or 7th grade. And I think a lot of people kind of disturbed by hearing that statistic, so. Why do we need to spend this money now and not wait until the spring when we have a better grasp on what is going on with COVID-19 and we actually get the kids back in a classroom? I guess I'll ask the question that way. The fall, by the time you get the materials in, half the school year is over. And the second part of the question is, is how often do we have to be spending this kind of money for updates on curriculum?
Why, these are really great questions, and I'll address the first one in the other. So the first question is, I heard it was, why do we need to spend the money now with, with our students in this kind of hybrid learning model? And I can give you my professional opinion that our students are accessing their curriculum both onsite and at home. All of these, well, the two curriculums that we have in front of you, the science and the reading, have digital platforms with student licenses. So it will allow our students to access their learning both while they're at home and while they're on, at school. DESI has accessed, the Department of Education has given us some very firm mandates that uninterrupted student learning is our goal. And of course, it is the goal of Acushnet Public Schools as well. We are firmly committed to providing this uninterrupted learning experience for our students. And we need to have digital access to make that happen. Well, we can make it happen with our current paper books, but providing us with digital licenses and digital access really promotes a stronger component of accessing their curriculum. And also having current curriculum is, is very essential to meet our standards as well.
Can I, can I stop you there?
Please.
So it, this is part of the digital experience, I guess, is what I have here, the science and the reading. So we have CARES Act money, and if we're out and the only reason why we need to do the digital learning is because of COVID-19, could we supplement some of these costs through the CARES Act money?
So I won't speak to the CARES Act fund right now because that money we've already utilized. So, you know, the, the CARES Act money, I think Kristen and I can speak to it a little bit more. But that was for the safety and well-being of the district and ensuring that we had the essential elements for providing that kind of an environment for our, for our community. So for, particularly for curriculum, curriculum purchases weren't allowed under the CARES Act, such as these.
Selectmen, order.
Just a couple of questions, like just on process.
Sure.
You know, I don't, I, I'm not qualified to debate whether or not you need curriculum development or any of those things. And first, I mean, before I even start, I just wanted to take the time to publicly thank Dr. Bailey and Kristen and you and your, your team at the school for the way you've handled, you know, the school year so far, especially with the, with some of the positive tests and the things that have gone on, the level of communication that your team has provided, I think is really something to be commended. Not easy, we're all, you know, I know you're all learning on the job, and as parents, we're all learning on the job as well and how to handle this. So I think I do appreciate as a customer, the, the level-headedness and the steady hand that you've had and, you know, the team has had at the school in handling this where we are so far. So I just wanted to make sure you, you all are aware of that and want the public to understand that as well.
That's, I appreciate it.
As far as, as far as process goes, again, you, the school committee made a decision or recognized the need for curriculum enhancements during la, like last year, right, during last budget?
I believe so.
Discussion. So the digital platform, is that a, an adjustment in strategy based on COVID-19? Or is that something that you all had planned in the first place, or? So the laptops essentially would be doing, that instruction would be done in class, and then just taking it home now? Is that, so I got that correct?
Excellent question. I feel that as we have our students currently where they're at, it really is not, the, the curriculum that we're looking for in normal times would be the curriculum that I would be looking to adopt, that we need to prepare our students for the 21st century. And the 21st century learners require a digital platform for accessing their curriculum. So we are preparing our students for their future with these updated, aligned and spiraled curriculums.
So this, so what you're suggesting here would, you know, essentially stand the test of time, right? It's not just something that you're doing to?
Yes.
To adapt to this current environment, right?
No, no, this is, this is something that will hopefully endure for many, many years to come.
And so when, last year when the school committee approved the budget and then it was submitted to a town meeting, was this curriculum included in your budget last year? I'm just curious as to, I, I'm concerned a little bit about process and as, you know, Selectman Gasper said, here we are, I have a special town meeting, and the scope of this was to fund, you know, consider capital expenditures, is any of this personnel? Or is it just purely digital platform? Just talk to me about the process, refresh my memory.
Going back in a few years, when we met with the former town administrator to discuss all of the schools' needs, whether it be operating expenses, curriculum, he approved us requesting money for curriculum, to update our curriculum. Because at the time, and still, it was in dire need of, of being updated. So I believe, not this past town meeting, so June of 2019, I believe, we approved the $50,000. It was either 18 or 19. And so it was just curriculum. And at that point, decisions were made, how to prioritize that money between Dr. Bailey and the principals. We, Carrie wasn't on board yet. So in the budget last year, in, in February, before COVID hit us, we had a list of articles that we were going to request. And we requested, I think only two of them that were immediate need because that was what we were asked to do, is just request immediate need for what you needed over the summer. Anything else that could be postponed, postpone it to fall town meeting, if there was one, and beyond. So the decision was made to postpone the curriculum request and others until, you know, after last spring town meeting. So the only one that we're coming forward with that we had, we're just postponing several others is the curriculum one because of the need. So I think then Dr. Bailey can pick up how the decision was made to spend it on what we've spent it on, or plan to spend it on.
So just to add, the curriculum needs is significant in the school district. The district has gone years without any curriculum adoptions in all areas, all grade levels. I think once we get to a point where we have everything updated, I think it would be more routine to have one subject be looked at and have an adoption year, not the way we're doing it now because we're trying to get caught up based on our audit. We know that we have, the needs are there, and our kids only have one year in that grade level. They only have one shot at it, we want to give them the very best that we can.
When, when would this, let's, so I guess the, so my gut tells me I would prefer to have this discussion in a typical budget cycle, you know, January, February, March, leading up to town meeting, so you can look at the totality of your overall, your overall budget, town's funding. So I'm a little concerned about doing it in a special town meeting in the fall. So I guess my question is, my question is, if we didn't have a town meeting this fall, if the Selectmen decided that- So I guess my question is, my question is, if we didn't have a town meeting this fall, if the selectmen decided that we weren't going to call a town meeting and the only reason why we did was to do the roof. How would you approach this? And then secondly, if, when, when do you plan to go live with this? Is it for the fall of 2021 or if you got the funding in November, would it be January 1st? So when does it, when would this go live?
So excellent questions as well. And as I, you know, I look to my, my boss here, I mean, I would like to get this curriculum in the hands of students as soon as possible, but there is a process that we have to use as we onboard it with the district. So the science and reading and even the DRAs are significantly lacking in our schools. Especially, you know, having some means of really understanding where our students are in terms of their reading. So these three pieces of curriculum and assessment will greatly help us. This current school year would be the ultimate goal. However, I, you know, there are appropriate processes, meaning Dr. Bailey can speak to that.
Right, so we have to schedule professional development, work with the companies on when they can
Bring them to us.
Right. And we know with some new curriculum that we purchased this year, even with the digital platform, it takes a long time sometimes to get everything.
So realistically, given all of the external pressures of COVID and just managing
Sure.
current Google Docs and what you're dealing with now, realistically, this is most likely be a fall of 2021 launch? I mean,
So I
It sounds like a lot of things would have to break in your favor for this to go forward in this school year.
Right, so to get the funds ahead of time, we could actually schedule PD prior to the school year. We could have the resources in the teacher's hands prior to the kids starting.
So, so in the one thing I will say too, the science and the reading curriculum is already in place at the FMS. So this would just be an extension of the digital platforms that were already in place. The getting them in place was challenging and time-consuming and detailed. And we're even still working out minor tweaks as we speak. However, now that we have our platforms integrated, so to speak, it will be much easier to get additional grades added to them. So it's, it's, I don't foresee the challenges that we've already faced as a district. I see it being a smoother and easier process. And the other thing that I'm very encouraged by and very much looking forward to are the teachers are very, very eager to get
Sure.
curriculum in their hands.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, so can we go back to the question that I asked is, how often do we update curriculum?
It hasn't been done in years.
So it hasn't been done in years. What, and that's shameful too, okay? And I know you're relatively new, Ms. Bailey, but that's the problem, right? We have roughly sixteen million bucks going to the schools, probably a little bit more than that now. Again, the reading deficiencies, we've talked about that. I've seen schools in, in the central part of the United States, they have math deficiencies at the seventy, eighty percent level. I question what's actually happening in our education system. When I start hearing and reading about these things, it's very troubling to me. Because this is our next generation, our future generations, right? That is supposed to be taking care of us like we did with our generations past. So, I mean, can you just, can you answer the question first of all is, how often do we update curriculum? Because it does, we don't want to see a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand dollars every two years being updating curriculum. And we find out in five years from now, our children still have a seventy percent deficiency rate, a math deficiency rate, a science deficiency rate. That's totally unacceptable and sooner or later, somebody needs to speak out against this and correct the problem. Again, we can throw as much money as we want at a problem if, when, and that's great if it solves the problem. But when it doesn't solve a problem, that's a huge problem. So I understand there's a need. Let me ask you this question because we really don't have all these available funds. So I think Selectman Warner brought up a good point. If we weren't doing a special fall town meeting, right? We wouldn't be here today, we wouldn't have this request put in. So let me ask you this question. You have three categories, science curriculum, reading curriculum and developmental reading assessments. Fifty-nine thousand, roughly sixty thousand for science, reading is fifty thousand. And then roughly sixteen thousand for developmental reading. If out of those three, you would have to choose one right now, which one would it be that was the most critical now to fund?
Well, I think that that would be a decision that I would have to make with a couple more stakeholders, but I would really focus on the science and/or the reading. And we would collectively come to that decision and it would be something that I would take into account, Dr. Bailey, as well as the building principals, as well as the faculty as well. But I could get you that recommendation if you gave me a, a timeline. I'd be happy to do it. But I, it's like asking me to choose which of my four children is my favorite. You know.
The one that's easiest probably.
They're all easy in different ways, right? So, you know, I hear what you're saying and I, I greatly respect your points about making sure that our investments have value and that we have the data to prove it. And that's what we're trying to do with these digital curriculums.
So I, when I look at the numbers and I look at the shortfall, we, we, when I did some math, depending on where we go, looking at about ninety thousand bucks that we, we could potentially, depending on how spending goes tonight. So I would ask before you leave, you're looking at, you could fund, you can't fund both, reading and science. But if you gave us an opportunity to allow a certain amount of dollars, we could actually fund the developmental reading assessments in one of the other two. So it doesn't really matter. We could figure that out once we get to the end of this meeting. We could say, this is what we have for available funds. And it would give you that stat instead of trying to implement three different programs of curriculum all in one calendar year. We could, maybe we fund one or two, you know, the reading, the developmental reading one in either reading or science. And we may be able to have those funds, so.
That'd be great.
You know, we could look at that and say, when we're all done with the process, we'll figure out what we have left for available funds and say, we could definitely do, even if we just did one, and allocate a certain amount of money for you folks to decide how that's allocated, whether you do the reading or the science. And I think that's something that we may be able to do, but I don't, you know, trying to, for you folks to try to say, hey, I understand, right? So I would probably say no now. But we were told about the reading curriculum, how far behind our children are, I would probably say you might want to start with reading because, you know, we're not good at it.
Well, I, I, I think there's just such wonderful potential here and such wonderful families and faculty. It would be absolutely amazing if we could get the reading and the DRA assessments. It would be just such a wonderful starting point for us.
The teachers are craving, they want this in advance.
I, I, I understand. I, I mean, I'm sure it's frustrating to be a teacher and know that your students are graduating seventy percent deficiency. I would be very saddened if I was a school teacher seeing I was very saddened with this happening. And along with a lot of people that watched that meeting the same way. And I think a lot of people in that meeting, including the finance committee members, were very saddened by those statistics. And we need to improve that. And, and, and I look forward to help fund that improvement as long as we get good results in the next year, the next year, the next year, and good luck. To you.
Chairman, I just want to say that again, there's no doubt in my mind when it comes to need, you know what I mean? So, you know, you've got my, my pledge that if there's a viable need, I'll stand side by side, whether it's a roof or something like this, you know? But I just think sometimes process ultimately dictates what you can, what you can really implement, right? And so I want to make sure that we can almost do a course correction with these town meeting requests. That, that this is really discussed and debated as part of your normal budget process. Because I think that preserves a lot of goodwill for the community. Because, you know, you don't want people to go to town meeting and say, well, why wasn't this discussed? You know, sixteen million was appropriated in June, why wasn't this handled then? Why do we have to do this in the fall? So I just want to make sure that, you know, with this, if this wasn't approved, it would be part of your normal budget process and you'd have to probably tar, prioritize within, you know, your, your ask to, to the finance committee. So I'm looking at this really, it's just a matter of time before you get the money? Probably not.
Right.
And can we do some now? Or we, are you looking to be, not loan the money, but like, maybe just front the money now so you can get moving on this project rather than wait another six months to a year, right? Is that essentially what I'm hearing?
And we've been spacing it out because of the, the need is so large right now.
And the financial piece is significant as well.
Right, and it's, I think it's, you know, in the interest of full disclosure, I think it's a lot of, it's hard for people to understand on the non-school side of things, just from a budgetary development. Because we don't have all the ins and outs. I don't know where every penny is spent and I, I don't want to ask questions that may come across as skeptical. That's not, it's just my, you know, quest for more information. I think this is, hats off to you for putting this forward and, and, you know, maybe this is a priority. I think it's a huge deal, it's a huge deal for the kids and, you know, the taxpayers, as Mr. Gasper said. Hopefully we'll see a return on the investment.
Absolutely. The majority of our budget, as you know, is tuition-based, which is very unique in a KUSHNET. So it's transportation, salaries and tuition. So that's, I think, our struggle with getting curriculum into the budget. We've tried and the former town administrator guided us to do it this way. But if there's a different way, we will definitely be more than happy to work together on process.
Yeah, I think it's important that we do that. And you hit the key word, you talked about salaries and I don't want to get too in-depth into that, we're talking about that. But that's something that you also need to be considered, right? Because business administration is getting pretty big salary increases when you could cut back on that and you could be funding some of this curriculum stuff. Because it's really, if it's really supposed to be for the kids, they make it for the kids. And I think that's where the anger is coming from, from a lot of parents, because I hear from a lot of parents. And it's very upsetting that money's being spent here instead of where it really needs to be belonged. And every time we go to the, to the town meeting, it's about the kids. Well, is it really about the kids if I have a seventy percent deficiency in reading? I don't think so. So we just need to do a better job. And I think that everybody at the school department, I think our teachers are phenomenal. We have a lot of great teachers there. I, I'm a graduate of the schools myself. I didn't turn out so bad. And I would just like to see that trend continue. We are putting kids through the education system and we're coming out with the best possible product at the end. And, and that means everything to everybody, right? When you, as a parent, you want to see the kids, you know, inspire our children to be something in the world and not just exist in the world. And I think that's what it's really all about, to see our kids getting that education and moving on to higher places and doing great things with their lives. That's what every parent wants to see in their children. And I think that's what this board wants to see in our children graduating classes. So we'll just consider it the article. Thank you, Mr. Duroch, did you have something?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Are you still anticipating, because this might run parallel to the reading proposals here in front of me for the new curriculum. Are you still anticipating hiring a reading specialist? Because that was discussed in detail at a joint meeting back in the beginning of COVID. And, and I know it didn't come to fruition as of yet.
So quite honestly, when I came into the district two years ago, it was surprising that the district didn't have at least one reading specialist. So it is something that principals desire. I know that we've discussed it and I believe it's been a top priority for the last couple of years to help us with, in that area.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Hebert will notify you with whatever the board's decision is, if you folks want to
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Be well.
Hey, thank you, it was nice to meet you.
All right. Second article, number two, is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds to otherwise a sum of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of funding the town planner to prepare the preliminary components and framework of two thousand twenty-one to thirty-one, two thousand thirty-one Town of KUSHNET master plan including concept plan of a slalom street carter, take any other action relative there too. Mr. Young, I guess if this is your master plan, if we can make it quick, because the board doesn't have all day. I know that school department sometimes it, it extends to a lengthy conversation, but it's warranted because of the size of their budget and the scope of their work. So I apologize. Thank you, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, may I present from the
Mr. Young. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Chairman, I understand that it's strict timeline, so I will try to be brief. Listening to your past discussion, I can say that a lot of what is involved in the master plan has to do with economic development, which helps pay for some of these issues which you were just addressing. So quickly go through these agenda items. Let's talk about why we need to be executing the master plan. The last one was prepared in two thousand eight and they really should run a course of about ten years. Presently, we need to begin to think about coordinating, ensuring synergy of some future, some very large future projects and initiatives. And this is why I think this is imperative that we kickstart this process now. I can rattle off a few projects which are, have a lot of potential for the town. They're all occurring in roughly the same area and they should, we're, we're going to miss an opportunity to coordinate them and, and capitalize on some synergy and cost savings and maximize our return on investment if we're, if those opportunities lie in wish. There are a lot of reasons. MBTA probably the most looming issue, whether it's going to be pressure on open space, which has the ability to disrupt that town and country feel that, that we like so much in a KUSHNET. We have, we still have affordable and senior housing requirements that are not met and need to be addressed. Part of that solution might be cluster development and multifamily condominium development. Because of just the growth in the area and the potential for MBTA, we're going to be seeing, and you're seeing now, actually increased traffic congestion in town. We have a, a background watershed issue with nitrogen loading, which is why we went through CWMP. Now we're, why we're thinking about phase one sewer process. Public facilities, sewer being, you know, one of the primary ones, but other public facilities like schools, et cetera, have to be. We have to look at those collectively, holistically, determine priorities and begin to think about how we will approach remedies for, for any issues that we uncover. All this has the ability to influence zoning, which is the sort of zoning and zoning ordinances, which are the underlying laws which dictate what is allowed and what is prohibited and that which is allowed, how that will, how we can bring about the development in the town. And then finally, I'll just note, and this is, you know, we were talking about the MVP grant, which we were successful in securing, which will start on November the 10th. I'm not here to debate why the climate might be changing, but it appears that it is. And in waterfront communities, that can have a significant impact. State agencies, federal agencies want to see that we are aware of that and giving it consideration. So the master plan is, this is the definition of master plan law, a statement through text, maps, illustrations, et cetera, which help you and other leadership entities in the town make informed, data-driven decisions. At the end of the day, you know, the master plan is a game plan for the town. What we should be doing now, both to, to address short-term and long-term issues. We have been very successful in the last master plan process in developing it and executing on it. A lot of communities write a master plan and it resides on a shelf. We have probably met about eighty percent of the initiatives that were addressed in the initial master plan. So it's, it's a really important strategy document for you folks. Okay. So what I'm showing here is, these are the master plan elements, what is in red, those are the chapters, okay? Those are the aspects of a master plan, how we would, the lens through which we would look at, analyze and think about where we need to be two years from now, five, ten and twenty years from now. And what I want to show is how there's this interplay between these aspects. You know, we need to be thinking about sewer phase one, all right? So you don't think about that in a vacuum. You have to think about, about that in terms of housing and land use. When you build sewer, growth occurs around it. So you have to prepare the under, the underlying zoning to accommodate that. And then that will allow for higher density housing around sewer projects. That shouldn't be accidental, random, done in a vacuum. It has to be coordinated through, with and including several different perspectives. Here's another one. MBTA commuter rail is coming. That's going to impact traffic congestion. KUSHNET has, you know, many fantastic attributes which are going to make it attractive for people to move here. So increased housing demand, increased pressure on land development.
Senator, I just want to make sure, can you say increase? It's not like we're looking to do that, we want to make sure how we handle those pressures, correct?
This, right, this is almost a defensive but offensive standpoint. We know the MBT is coming, so we accept that, but that's going to have an impact on KUSHNET. I can ride my bike in ten minutes, I'm going to be at the King's Highway Station. So, you know, KUSHNET is going to be impacted by that. And these are the pressures, these are the pressures and how we need to be thinking now about what will be happening, you know, in the future.
So you've got land use, increased pressure on land development, right? Increased housing demand. So right now we have one point five acre buildable lot. So if you went back to one page backwards, you talked about cluster housing, which is probably a bad topic for a small community of ourselves, zoning for small lots, things of that nature, high density housing. That means just, that's cluster housing, sticking them all on top of each other and things of that nature. And you pointed to a sewer phase one, which is over by the library. And you pointed to a sewer Phase One, which is over by the library, which you're talking about White's Field, and White's Field that can be, that can be done on. So right now, that can't be done because of our housing lot sizes. That can't be done. So the urgency that we're talking about here, I question sometimes, you know, the expedite and the urgency to do certain things. I think once you do that, that's going to increase more demand now because you're going to have the ability to do cluster housing, small lot size. That's going to increase the traffic in the flow. So it's kind of counterintuitive to what was just said. So I just want to be careful when people at home are watching this. They, they think that that's, you know, the philosophy. It's not. It's counterintuitive to what you're trying to address. So you have to be real careful of how you do zoning to make sure that you're not creating zoning to create more traffic congestion, because that's exactly what it's going to do. The higher density housing that we put in, the more people come in, the more cars are being used, the higher traffic flows you're going to have. So that's something that everybody needs to be very well aware of. And, you know, I think senior housing is great, the low-income housing, that 40B stuff, that we won't get too involved in that. I know quite a bit about 40B housing and the guidelines that follow along with it. It's all a crock of crap, the way a developer can come in and do those kind of things. We'll talk about it later on, some other time. But, you know, it's, some of the stuff that we're talking about, yeah, it's great, and you want to be planning for it. It's just, you want to make sure that you're not doing things counterintuitive to the main objective of a master plan. And you're going to self-create a problem by creating high-density housing lots and things of that nature, especially on a main artery all available.
I would, I would agree. I think we're maybe saying the same thing a different way. What we want to do by doing a holistic, going through a holistic planning process is to make sure that what you're describing doesn't happen. We need to figure out where we want growth to happen and where we don't.
Correct.
Because wherever you put sewer, you're going to have growth. So you better think first about where do you want the growth to occur before you start talking about where do you want to run sewer.
Right.
And you have to understand, when you, when you run sewer and you change the underlying zoning, you're going to, and you incur increased housing density, that's going to increase traffic, et cetera, et cetera. So the point that I think we're making here is, you can't just look at sewer and say, let's just put sewer here, and not think about all those other aspects which you're raising. They have to be thought about all at the same time.
I think when I passed, well, the board passed, but I was instrumental in passing the CWMP in 2016, as everybody's aware of. I spoke on that, where 90% residential, 92% residential, and 8% commercial. And I spoke to that. If we were able to bring in more sewer, we could spur economic development, bring businesses in, especially over by where the dairy is. There's a lot of open space there, and might encourage that landowner to say, yeah, we can bring in more commercial, and we have a little industrial park type thing over there. And that's, that's the only way you're getting commercial development, is where sewer is.
Correct.
Right? So, go ahead.
Okay. Good. Okay, this is just the timeline. This really takes place over approximately a two-year process. So I just break this down into Phase One and Phase Two. The first phase is a lot of data collection, a lot of surveys of citizens to kind of get a sense of where we're at as a community, where we want to go in terms of growth, and what kind of growth. And then we take a really hard look at land use, and this is exactly what Chairman Gaspar is talking about. One of the first things we have to address is, where do we want growth to occur? What do we want Akushnet to look like 10 and 20 years from now? Because everything is driven from that. So thank you for raising that issue. And then, once we have established that, then, you know, we're in parallel, looking at many other aspects, including housing, transportation, public facilities, et cetera, all those elements that I mentioned before. So, you know, I'm predicting by, you know, the end of 2022, we'll have a completed master plan to replace the 2008 master plan. So this is a very public-intensive process. We will establish, like we did the last time, committees to drill down to and to analyze all these different aspects of Akushnet. So each one of these represents a committee with a chair. And the chair of each committee will be on the steering committee, okay? We will also be involving people external to the town, including Academia, SERPED, that's our regional planning agency, et cetera. Okay, so the scope of, you know, what, what are we paying for here? What are we asking to pay for here? Again, a lot of data collection up front. We just finished the census, so we'll have a lot of census data flooding in. That's going to be very helpful to identify trends. We'll stand up the committees, educate and train them. You know, roughly, we held last time about 32 committee meetings, so that's a big push to, to get going. A lot of coordination with our external agencies. You can, you can read the list. But it gets down to, at the end, we bring it all together. These committees have been operating in parallel, and we do the final look at, how is this going to be a coordinated document? And then we publish that, like we did in 2008. We hand that over to you and to other leadership entities in town. That's your game plan, okay? So that helps us spend wisely, pursue the appropriate grants to pay for important projects, and to, you know, stimulate economic growth to help, you know, take some of that burden off the residents and create some industry and commercial enterprise.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question about the article? It says that this, it says $15,750 for the purpose of funding the town planner to prepare preliminary components and framework for this master plan. Can you explain what that means? Is that $15,750 going to your salary? Or is that $15,750 to do whatever work is necessary to put this, this again, back together? Updating that?
Right. It'll be more than, this is now an obsolete document, so it's a rewrite. Okay, so we start from scratch.
Well, it's, it was supposed to be a 20-year plan back when we discussed it the first time around, and it's a 12-year plan, but okay.
There are 10-year plans. They have an out year of 20. But we've done, I would say, 70, roughly 70 to 80%. And those which we didn't accomplish become some of the higher priority projects now.
So is the $15,750 your salary? Or is it to be able to work within the confines and be able to fund things that we need to be funded in preparation of doing the plan?
Right. So as before, when I wrote this a long time ago, that is a plus up to my salary. And this is based on the amount that was submitted in the spring budget process.
Which was a lot more money, yep.
And this is truncated, you know, seven-twelfths of what was asked for in the spring.
Okay. Okay.
Any, any questions?
Yeah, I, if you want to keep talking about that. I'm 100% against spending $15,750 more dollars to supplement your income when you have $36,000 in the planning budget and you are considered the town planner. You would think that this would fall right into that category under the town planner's responsibilities and obligations. And then you have $11,000 in the selectmen's budget that says special project manager, which in case we haven't really gotten or seen anything for the $11,000, in my opinion, and a lot of people's opinions, for that $11,000. So I would ask, why, at $47,000 for the amount of hours that you're putting in as a town planner and a special project manager, why would I supplement that income and give you another boost of $16,000? It makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever.
That's a great question. So usually, communities approach this one of two ways. They either hire a consultant to do that, and they would, you know, pay more than the cost that I'm proposing. Or they pay for in-house, they might hire specialized in-house staff to do a short-term project. So, you know, either way, it's way outside the normal realm of what a planner does. You know, on a day-to-day basis, planners are reviewing subdivision plans, you know, working on grants, et cetera. This is, this is a pretty monumental effort.
Okay, but it's still a special project, and that's what you get paid for under the Board of Selectmen's salary of $11,000, is a special project manager. So I haven't seen anything in past years, I don't know, half a dozen years, maybe better, of anything that's been done as a special project to justify the $11,000 we've been paying. So again, I have a major problem with paying somebody the $46,000 you're currently making, additional $16,000, which bumps you into the $60,000 range. Basically, what I know and what I see is part-time work as a town planner and as a special project manager, Henry. And I'm sorry, I have to say it because I think I've had enough is enough with, every time we bump somebody and ask somebody to do something a little bit above and beyond, which this isn't even above and beyond, it's a special project manager job. That's what, this job is the finest for that $11,000. You're going to be in the $60,000 range for a part-time job, Henry. And we've got full-time employees here, 35, 40 hours a week. We have TPW workers that are making 48,000 bucks, and they work 40 hours a week. And then we've got assistant town accountant, assistant town treasurer, collector in the mid-40s. Doesn't mean that they're underpaid. It just says to me that this would be an overpaid position. And I, I have a huge problem with that. I truly do. I just think it's, it appalls me that we're being asked to pay that kind of money when your salary is what your salary is, and you don't punch a time clock. And there's nothing, I don't see anything substantial that's been done for the, let's just talk about the $11,000 that's in the Board of Selectmen's budget.
Mr. Chairman, can I, maybe I'd like to provide, I'd like to provide a little bit of a historical perspective on this position. And I'm not sure if you were on the board in 2008 when we...
I was on the Finance Committee Selectmen.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just saying, Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen, two different, two different animals, as you know. When we, Henry's salary is a part-time position as a town planner. When we funded, when we built in the special projects manager, special project manager line item, essentially, that was a workaround to give the Board of Selectmen some degree of guidance and/or, I don't like to use the word control, but we didn't feel like we wanted Henry's, that position to be solely housed in the planning department, which was a separately elected board, totally under their control. So the Board of Selectmen, at the time we brought Henry on board, we wanted to have some, we wanted to have a lot of access to Henry to help guide some of these things. So we came up with the title Special Project Manager. It wasn't just do special projects. You can combine the whole salary, make it $46,000, which is roughly what a part-time town planner makes. A full-time town planner, I think in Frampton and other communities, the going rate is somewhere around $70,000 to $80,000. And you're paying for a level of expertise. And so if there ever was a special project, it would be this one. And I went through the planning, the master plan process years ago. The best document that we could have done prior to 2008, and I said it then, I was negative five when the last time we did a town, when we did a master plan. It was 1964. So we went from 1964 to 2008 without a game plan. And I would argue that's why Akushnet was somewhat antiquated. And Kevin, with you being on the Finance Committee and a member of the Board of Selectmen, we took this document, and we went gangbusters. New library, new police station. We doubled down on solar, which is now helping us pay for a school roof. So as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I think this master plan, we just talked about a curriculum development. This is our curriculum. You know, this is our curriculum development. This is a tool that I think this board needs in order to take on the next 10 years. So I'm all in favor of it. You're going to pay for it. You want good product. I'm on board. I think we need a master plan.
I like, I like the updating of the master plan. I think that's awesome. And I think that the previous master plan, a lot of the components were, were good components. Some of it didn't prove out, some of it did, right? Like you said, Mr. Warner, but, you know, it's just, it's, the point is, when, when that was done, just so everybody's aware of it, the budgets back then, from 2008 moving forward, Mr. Young's title was grant writer. And then it was changed to special project manager years later, 2014, 15, or whatever it was. So the reality of it is, is I, I don't feel there's a need to pay the additional $16,000. I really think that, based on the amount of time that he spends, call it part-time, whatever you want to call it, just 20 hours a week is part-time. I think we can get this document done. That's, that's what I'm saying. I don't think it warrants a $63,000 salary. I really don't.
That's going to create a lot of projects overdone.
First of all, it's, it's, you're not making $15,750 this year. You just presented to us that this is a two-year project. Now is this $15,7, whatever, it's $15,750 for this project over a two-year span? Or is this like every year?
That would be every year going forward.
Well, you, you put up a slide that says with your schedule that it's going to take two years to, yeah, right there. So it's December 20, you're starting, and then so December 22 is when you finish it.
Correct.
Okay, so it's $15,7 for this project?
$15,7 to this point.
One year.
For one year.
So he's going to do it again in the spring.
All right. But now I have to weigh out also to, let's talk about the master plan. Is this master plan not going to get established? Are you telling them that?
No, I think, I think that it absolutely needs to be done. What I'm saying is, I don't want to spend $16,000 in the short period of time we have left, in the six months that we have. And then we're going to be doing another article in the spring saying, oh, we want $16,000 more dollars or put it inside of a salary and a budget. And then that just stays, they have like previous salaries out.
So what's our alternative? To hire an outside firm? And what is their cost going to be?
I say, I say if we have $11,000 as a special project manager in the Board of Selectmen, we ask that this be done under that $11,000. I mean, what are you getting for $11,000 right now? Can you tell me that?
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you what you're getting. You're getting a part-time planner, because those two salaries are combined to make up a part-time planner salary. If you want to do the master plan without any additional stipend or whatever, we'd have, we'd have a full-time master, a full-time planner, then we'd say, hey, you go do this. But we don't have a full-time planner. We got a, we got a part-time planner. So you got to, you know, you know.
And I think, you know, we can agree to disagree, because I disagree.
We can agree. Gentlemen, as far as I'm concerned, I'm okay with pushing this to the town meeting and letting the citizens decide.
Same here.
So a motion's been made. Is that a motion?
I make a motion to approve Article Two as presented.
Selectmen Warner? I'm a no.
Yes.
No disrespect, Mr. Young, but I'm a no.
None taken. Just business.
Mr. Young, you want to, you want to talk about number four while you're here?
If that would be possible, that'd be great. This is very quick. If I needed an explanation on this, I might not be able to vote on this. Okay. The, the excerpt from the zoning bylaws. If you see, 3.3. C14A8. I have a little arrow drawn to 3.3. C14B. Those two items are in conflict with each other as they are presently interpreted. Eight, 3.3. C14A8 says, "No common driveway shall be constructed within 150 feet of a structure that meets the construction standards herein specified." Whereas B says, "All principal structures shall be serviced by a driveway that is located within 150 feet." So Mr. Gaspar and I have been through this in quite a bit of detail. This essentially says that you would have to vote on a line that is 150 feet from the driveway. That's an impossibility for developers. So the E's, the...
Once again, explain, say that once more.
Okay. So you have a driveway, right? And what, what eight says is that you have to, "No common driveway shall be constructed within 150 feet of a structure." So you would have to be more than 150 feet away from the common drive.
A house?
A house.
Okay.
Okay, so you have to be more than 150 feet away. B says you have to be no more than 150 feet from that drive, and that's mostly for emergency access. So the, these are in conflict with each other, and it was discovered. And the quick, efficient fix that will eliminate this is to eliminate 3.3. C14A8. So the building inspector is on board with this. I've had numerous conversations with Chairman Gaspar on this as well.
I'm sorry. Okay. Question, all right. Here's an example. We've got four retreat lots, okay? 160-foot frontage. Okay, a hundred and sixty-foot frontage, forty by the a hundred and twenty thousand square feet you need to create a retreat lot. I mean, forty by a hundred. Okay. So right now a common driveway, one common driveway for three lots.
For three lots.
So what you're saying is now we bring the common driveway in. The houses have to be within a hundred and fifty feet of that common driveway as the individual driveway branches off of that.
Correct. Correct.
And these two bylaws are kind of redundant. I mean, when.
They're in conflict with each other.
When saying one thing, one's saying the opposite thing.
Exactly the opposite.
Okay.
So by eliminating eight. We, I think, restore the integrity of the bylaw. And maintain what is proper, and that is that we have appropriate EMS and fire lease access to the site.
So Henry, when we discussed this, I agreed that they're in conflict after further review. After digging through my bylaw book, I have some concerns. It's just, cause number eight says, the terminology here is bogus. Says, no common driveway shall be constructed within a hundred and fifty feet of any principal structure served therein. Okay? Right. So that means if I'm putting in a common driveway to serve more than one retreat lot. Cause that's the only reason why you would have a common driveway, correct?
Correct.
If they have retreat lots. So it would only be called a driveway if you only had one retreat lot. Not a common driveway. A common driveway is shared by more than one.
Correct.
Okay? So if you read number eight that you wanna strike out totally. It says, no common driveway shall be constructed within one hundred and fifty feet of any principal structure served therein. B says, all principal structures shall be serviced by a driveway. That is located within a hundred and fifty feet of a structure that meets the construction standards here, serviced herein. So it's two different terminologies being used in number eight and number nine. One says common driveway, the other says driveway. My issues now, after I've done, dug through some of the reading here. Which is very convoluted, the bylaws, zoning bylaws is. On page thirty-eight. For the retreat lots. Letter I, it says, no driveways shall be constructed within eight feet of any lot sideline. So that says no driveways, not a common driveway. By eliminating number eight now. You're basically saying, drop that. It requires no requirement for lot sidelined for a common driveway. There's no protection to neighboring structures. And you take away the only protection for existing property owners is the way I read that. Because there's no criteria now. So on a retreat lot, it's clearly defined eight feet from the sidelined, a lot, another, an existing sideline. Okay, lot sidelined, that's eight feet for a driveway. Nowhere in our bylaws does it specify now how many feet a common driveway would need to be from any side lot line. So by eliminating this, hundred and fifty feet, and I know this is very convoluted that it's written, and I do agree to some extent. That it's just been a mess all this time, and I know there's some developments out there that have hung up on this.
Right.
But you don't create any, you basically, what that was was saying that a common driveway is gonna be a hundred and fifty feet from any principal structure therein. So if I own a house here. You couldn't put in a common driveway till a hundred and fifty feet from that structure. That's what that was saying. So this is very convoluted. I think that it needs to be thought out a little bit more because now, what is the requirement? Let me ask you that question. What is the requirement for a lot sidelined for a common driveway? Because it's not specified in our bylaws.
Well, if I'm, if I'm understanding your question correctly, there are minimum setbacks for structures. Is that what we're referring to?
That's something totally different. And that, and that, and that's a good point because that could be argued too. Because the setback says seventy-five feet.
Right.
Here's the problem. A common driveway is technically an easement. That's what a common driveway is. Because if you have retreat lots, they only have to have forty feet strips that go out to the main road. So you've got forty, in case that you build three of them on a common driveway, you've got forty, eighty, one-twenty, correct?
Right.
Okay. Somebody owns where that common driveway is gonna go through their property, correct? Where does a setback come? Because if there's a common driveway that's built, that's basically an easement. Because it's gonna be on one person's property or another person's property, or perhaps twenty feet in this guy's forty-foot strip to the main road, or forty, twenty feet in this guy's, you following me? So when you start doing that with the width of the roads, the requirements of the clearouts and the width of the roads and everything else. How do you, how do you determine, that's an easement, how do you determine what that setback is now? The frontage setback off of, is it based off a property line? Because it can't be, because the common driveway can be in the middle of two forty-foot frontages for it to be a retreat lot.
The, well, the common driveway would serve as the boundary line of the property, if that's what you're, that has to be a survey common drive.
It could be. It could be what property though.
Typically.
I'm saying when you have, when you have. When you have a lot, another lot, and another lot. Each one of these lots need forty feet to come out, right? To the road, to the main road. So this guy's got forty feet, this guy's got forty feet, this guy's got forty feet. Where is the common driveway to access into these people's lots? So for instance. What, this is, this is a plot plan that you're familiar with. So the example is given here where the forty-foot strips come out here. So there's basically a hundred and twenty feet over here, right? So if one guy owns forty feet, you see how it curves in, some of the common driveway is gonna encroach onto this guy's property line. So where's the setback go from? Is it from the side of the road with all the other clearing of the trees and everything else? Where is that defined by?
Typically, it's from the outermost. Drive line that becomes the, that's the line from which the setbacks are established.
Can I ask a bigger picture question?
Sure.
Moving forward, if we move forward with this master plan. Why is it in our best interest to even do common driveways and retreat lots? What's the point of it? Cause in my time, you know, the member of the Board of Selectmen, my previous stint. People involved in common driveways typically end up hating each other and they end up getting into arguments and it becomes on our, on our desk in the first place.
They're made to utilize the property we have where we live. If you don't have any frontage and you've got thirteen acres, if you've got a hundred and sixty-foot.
Yeah, but that's a subdivision.
So that's one, well, not necessarily, you know.
It's one way of.
It could be utilizing land.
Utilizing land, but not having to create a subdivision. And that's.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So it's a workaround than going through a normal subdivision process, which is a much more, you know, arduous process, right?
With a common drive, the standards for the roadway itself can be more, what would be more commonly assumed to be a driveway. Versus a full-built out road that's, you know, paved with curbs and so forth. Then it becomes responsibility eventually, perhaps.
Well, the developer can also put in four driveways, one for each lot.
Right.
Okay? And then you don't have to share a driveway.
As long as you have frontage for it, if you have frontage going out to.
That's what I'm saying. It's ultimately a workaround. And typically ends up turning into an act, you know. It's been my experience, the times when we've had common driveways, the stuff that we deal with neighborly disputes and this and that because, you know.
Well, that can't happen. I want to debate that.
I can point to five that come to mind.
I just, I agree. I just don't, I don't know if this is the best time to do this now, Henry, after reading it and talking to people. And I know Mr. Marriott does have some concerns about this bylaw. Cause I spoke to him today and I spoke to other people about this bylaw and it just, there's nothing definitive in our bylaws that says now. Say we change it, we strike eight altogether, right? Let me ask you the question this way, is where does a common, where is a common driveway able to go in relationship to another structure, existing structure? Because that's defined in a retreat lot under a driveway, not a common driveway. There's a big difference between one family being at the end of a driveway.
Right.
Within a butter, which is the eight-foot sideline. It's identified on page eight. I looked for this thing. Letter I, no driveway shall be constructed within eight feet of any lot sideline. So on a common driveway, where is it defined in our bylaws that that common driveway can be placed? Amount of footage from a side lot line. If that question can't be answered, we should not be striking number eight right now and it should be well-vetted and better discussed. As far as where the driveways are located, on whose property it is, what's the setback from the common driveway now? I know it says retreat lots are seventy-five feet. Matter of fact, all the, all the requirements setbacks are seventy-five feet in a retreat lot. Okay?
Right.
But then we can argue that, oh, we revert back to residential zone where it's only twenty-five feet from setback from the front. But that's not true because they're all retreat lots. So you have to go back into the bylaws and go back and say, now you have to build seventy-five feet back. But where's it back from? It all depends on where the common driveway is placed. And so it's still arguable, that aspect of where I'm building seventy-five feet back from. What point is it my property line, which the common driveway can be twenty feet in from my property line? If that's the only way they can get that common driveway to go by the three lots, if when somebody puts a three-lot subdivision or a two-lot subdivision. You follow what I'm saying? It's really an easement is what a common driveway is. Because you're allowing more people to access what would normally be a private driveway that is called a common driveway, which is really essentially an easement.
Can we shut that door?
Well, this is, this is explained here in this part of the bylaw. Where it says, proof of recording at Bristol County Registry and Deal of the Special Permit. And the required covenants and easement is submitted to the Building Commission. So it does have to be recorded as an easement.
Yeah, I understand that. But where's the setback? Where do you start your setback from?
Well, okay.
Is it the property line or is it the road line?
Sounds like we're not ready for prime time, correct?
Doesn't sound that way to me. And I just, I just, what I don't, what I don't want to happen is it says, there is no requirement for a lot sidelined. You can look into the blue bylaws until you're blue in the face and you're not gonna find it.
For what, a driveway or a common driveway?
No, for a common driveway. And in retreat lots, say, but a retreat lot is defined under this as a regular driveway. You're gonna look at the verbiage in our bylaws. There's a difference between a driveway and a common driveway, Mr. Deroche, okay? And I don't care who owns fifteen acres of land that wants to split it up with forty-foot strips and make retreat lots. That's not the issue. What the issue is, is how about the current resident that's out on the main road and you're sticking a common driveway? Where you're gonna have all these people flooding up and down right on the side of their property line now. I don't think anybody's gonna really like that.
Like we approved the other day for Ashley's property. We gave the right for a common driveway, created a forty-foot strip.
Where, who's Ashley?
The Peach Fund up on Main Street.
That's not correct. That's one retreat lot and that's specified in the bylaws. That's not a common driveway. That's what I'm trying to explain to you, okay? That was one lot, one forty-foot strip going out to the main road. You're talking about the piece that was broken out that we gave our, ran a free, first refusal up for? Right?
Which created a driveway.
That's correct. That's a driveway that's specified in our bylaws. I'm asking you to take my bylaw book and show me in the bylaw book where it specifies a side lot line as it does for a driveway. For a common driveway, Mr. Deroche. There's just two different species here. And as much as I agree that this bylaw is screwy and it should be changed. I think we need to do a better job in defining how, where a common driveway can be placed in relationship to an existing structure. And an existing structure is not a driveway. It's, the definitions in the beginning of the bylaw books clearly says that a structure is something man-made built, da-da-da-da-da. And it's a wood and it's built out wood and man-made. It's not a road. It's on another road in a driveway. So we have to be more definitive when we're doing. Language for zoning bylaws, I'll be honest with you, I don't think we've done a very good job. Because obviously we're here talking about something that's been in there since nineteen ninety-six, was revised in nineteen ninety-eight. It got away from us. It was revised. We did it down there with the Business Village District where we said we can build commercial lots on ten thousand square feet. But you can't have a commercial lot with water and sewer, cause you can't have a well and sewer on the same property. So we had to go back and change that where we changed it and said after the fact, oh, we need to have municipal water and sewer. So I just think when we're doing zoning bylaw changes, it needs to be very well-vetted. Everyone needs to be on board, not just the planning board. It's gonna come through the Board of Selectmen, it's gonna go through the Building Commission, it's gonna go through the Board of Conservation, it's gonna go through the Board of Health. Make sure everybody, the TPW, make sure everybody understands what it is and it's well-defined. And we have a bylaw review committee for a reason. That's where the vetting process should take place. Matter of fact, we appointed Mr. Lorna to it. So I just think, as much as I want this bylaw to be corrected. I don't think that this does what we want it to do because once we correct this, Henry. My problem is gonna be is somebody out there, you know, our developers are, they're gonna strike while the kettle's hot and they're gonna say. Bam, I'm moving in because I know I can buy that land and I don't have no distance now for a common driveway. And I'm sliding right on in and I'm gonna get that development and I'm fraying clear because once you change it. There's a period of time that goes by, right? There's a grandfather period. I think it's five years or whatever it is. So when we're making zoning changes, let's make sure we do it and we do it right. It's all I'm asking you to do. And I don't think, as much as I wanna say, let's do it, I, this doesn't work.
Motion to strike.
There you go. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
See you in the spring.
Dave, you beat me to it. In my hand.
Sorry, sorry.
Julie, you said the Chief Gallagher, we'd zoom him in at some point.
Uh, he's here.
Is he here, here?
Yeah. There he is.
Hello, everyone. Gentlemen.
Afternoon, Chief.
Let in. So I come before you with a request for an article at town meeting to complete a project that we began nearly a year and a half ago. I believe it's the last two consecutive town meetings. You've been kind enough to authorize town meeting to consider expenditure from the Sola Capital Improvement Fund to refurbish all of our fire apparatus. The last article was enough to get through the repairs and refurbishing required for Engine Five. And half of the list for Engine One, I'm sorry, Squad Two, newest apparatus. We save the newest for last. We were able to do some of the big issues. They brought in gas tank. Air cylinders needed to be replaced along with some other structural issues. We still have the list remaining. And this request of fifteen thousand dollars from the Sola Capital Fund. Would get us to the finish line with Squad Two and that would complete the project. All of your fire apparatus will have been refurbished in the last year and a half. Extending their serviceable life well into the administration of your next fire team.
Discussion, gentlemen?
Makes sense to me.
I don't see any reason not moving this forward.
Chief, is there any way that you log all of this refurbishing stuff so that, you know, God forbid if something were to happen.
Yep.
You know, the town, we, the town would know what's been done to our vehicles. I know you came last year for thirty-five thousand bucks and we were supposed to be like Engine Four.
We have all of.
Then we had questioned it and you said, well, it's not just for that one, for multiple things. And I understand some of our equipment is aging out and we need to do certain things and things of that nature, public safety, obviously. Saying you're asking for fifteen thousand dollars now. I don't have a problem with it. I just, I would like to keep some posting of that.
We have it all documented.
Like a records, a maintenance records book for each vehicle, a log book.
Every vehicle, every, every single thing we do, from an oil change to a windshield wiper.
It's kept in the individual vehicles?
With who the vendor was and what the cost was.
Excellent. Gentlemen, is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The next one, gentlemen, number five, just so everybody at home is aware. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the water special revenue fund surplus of seventy-one thousand five hundred bucks to complete a risk and resilience assessment. And an emergency response plan required to be filed with the EPA before June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. We already approved this article when Ms. Silver and Mr. Manad were here at our last meeting. They went over it. So if anybody's curious about what it is, they can look back on the Selectmen's meeting, check it out and have that explanation. It's basically over storm-related issues on how we assess things and how we go about things in case of a natural disaster and things of that nature. It's something that we are mandated to do by the EPA. So. That's already been done, gentlemen. For the record, we're just, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six is to see if the town will vote to transfer from the school budget to the sewer surplus account to sum of one hundred and ten thousand dollars for reimbursement for the school sewer pump. Or take any other action relative there too. This is the amount. Removed from the sewer surplus to purchase the pump, sewer pump stations for the school as shown in Article Fifteen of the annual town warrant dated June fifth, two thousand seventeen. And now has been determined to be unusable for any other residents sewer needs.
You already approved this one at the last meeting as well.
This one was, this one was approved as well, Chief.
Yes, it's number six and number eight.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve one more time?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, to see if the vote, the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to sum of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a John Deere five forty-four loader. For the use within the Department of Public Works. Or take any other action relative there too. Mr. Manad? You wanna give the board an update? Um, I think you spoke a little bit about it last time, but it'd be nice if you just tell us the, uh, the, the needs of that loader and what it does for the town of Acushnet.
All right, um. That loader actually is, is eighteen years old. Um, again, it's still running good, it does have some, you know, little transmission noises. But, uh, you know, will it make the season, you know, um, nobody knows, so, uh, it's got seventy-five hundred hours on it now currently. And, uh, that's where we're at, I guess. Uh, that's used for, we use it for loading the sanders, that's used for screening, that's used for any tree work or any big trees that gotta be moved off the road. You know, we gotta go in and push them off the road to keep the, you know, the roads open. Mr. Gasper actually was out there during storms, during hurricanes and we were using that loader just so fire trucks and EMS and everybody could get to where they had to go.
That's right.
You know, so it is a vital piece of the, of the thing we don't have, that's the only one we have. Um, you know, if the thing does break down, I don't think, you know, say the train did go or something in a storm, um, you know, we're not, it ain't something you can just go out and rent right away, especially in an emergency situation. Um, and we don't have no.
They're all rented at that point, right?
Correct.
So gentlemen, as Mr. Manad has alluded to, this is, I talked to Mr. Manad about this and seeing if there was any way we could hold this back and I wasn't comfortable after what Mr. Manad just said to you, you gentlemen and myself, that it is the lifeblood of the community and storm-related issues, whether it be a hurricane, blizzards, whatever it is. Um, I remember when the, back in early two thousands when this machine was first purchased, there was a massive blizzard going on. And I remember hearing this jet noise coming up my street and I looked out that window and here comes that loader and I'll tell you right now, if it wasn't for that loader, our roads would never get opened up. Um, when we have ice conditions, hard freeze conditions, the loader's the machine that goes up and busts up that road and the ice off that road. If we lose a road, we've done it before a couple of years back, I think it was over on Bow Drive. We had the complaints and I made a call to you and then you sent over the loader and a couple of other pieces of equipment to hammer that ice out. We ended up, we lost the road, we didn't get there in time to plow the road, whatever was, was occurred. We had about six inches thick of ice on the road and, and big ruts and the residents were just up in arms and we did what we could, the temperature dropped dramatically, we just didn't get there and, and we lost that one little section of that road. But it was a, it was a disaster to clean that road up after the fact and without the loader, we would have never done it, so. I, I don't wanna be the guy responsible for saying, eh, not now, Dan, when I know how great this machine is.
Again, you know, it's eighteen years old, you know, I got, uh, personally, you got an eighteen-year-old vehicle, I got a fifteen-year-old one. I wouldn't wanna drive it to California, take a chance, you know what I mean? So it's kinda on that, will it make it, maybe, you know, and again, will it make it, maybe this year, you know what I mean, but.
Can we, uh?
I'm sorry, go ahead, stop him, DeRoche.
Uh, what's your plans on the old one?
I definitely wanna keep it, but again, if it, um, that was gonna be used for the recycling.
Right?
Well, it's gonna be for the recycling center, um, which it ain't have the use that, it's gonna be used.
But if something breaks on it, we gotta repair.
Correct, but it's not the, it's not the end of the world if it breaks down. If it did break down, we have our other loader. Currently, this is the only piece of equipment we have, so if it goes down.
Right, but we need sixty grand for a transmission or fifty grand.
Yeah, but it's not just.
I'd be planning on keeping two of them, you know, there's no way.
Well, again, it's not gonna be used, it's not an everyday thing.
Just get rid of it. Edit that.
Yeah, well, not, not for what they're gonna give you for, I, I personally, I don't think that's, you know, it's an old machine, but it still runs good. John Deere's a really good, uh, piece of equipment. Um, yeah, it's got a little leaks here and there, but again, if it's only used on Fridays and Saturdays at the recyclers, uh, what's it gonna be used, like an hour a week, you know what I mean, the weekend?
Few hours.
They really don't, it's not really used that much on that.
And, and not only that, Mr. DeRoche, is, is the older, the, the, the machine we have today, yes, it's eighteen years old. The transmission does make a little bit of noise, I talked to Dan, I listen to the noise and everything else. I just, I do know a little bit about repairs of vehicles. Um, you know, the loader's not something you put on a trailer and drive to the other side of town. You drive the loader across town to get to a, trees down, blizzards, whatever it may be. That machine's driving down the zone with the big huge six-foot wheels on it. You drive that loader, so to drive it with a, in the yard, you're putting that much less wear and tear on it because you're only moving around in a few hundred-foot spot versus driving it on the other side of town and on the other side of town, so. I, I'm not gonna be the guy that says, ah, wait till the, wait till the spring.
I can understand that, I just don't know if there's any monetary value, you know, if it was worth fifty grand.
Well, no, it is, it's definitely a value, but they, like, the dealers ain't gonna give you nothing for them, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but we use that, we can use that one, we, we, the plan should be is you take the new machine and you use it for all the things that are pertinent that you have to travel to, right? And you park the machine, you're not using it in the yard for scrubby issues like recycling and crap like that, just beating up on a machine because you have a brand-new machine. Use the old machine to do all that recycling, loading your, uh, what do you call it, to crush it when you process all the material over there. I mean, you can use both machines and do it that much quicker, but the, the name of the game is really to keep the old one at the yard and do what it needs to do and hey, if we need to travel down Lake Street or whatever, we'll do a project, we will, but.
The other issues.
Start a primary.
Even brand-new ones, you know, nothing's in stone, even wanna say that, but at least you had another backup as well, you know, another little piece of equipment just in case, you know, that's why I wouldn't wanna get rid of it.
Chairman, question?
Mr. Wona?
Can we, uh, I mean, do we have to use cash, can we buy, you know, can we finance it? Can we, uh, you know, rather than just eat into our free cash total, is this a big enough expenditure with interest rates for a small bond? Or is that too much of a hassle? I wanna say it has passed with something to this magnitude, you know, rather than just grab.
Well, it is a considerable amount.
Rather than, you know, quarter million out of free cash can amortize this over time, I mean.
Uh, we could borrow, but, um, we would, if it's a new debt exclusion, we would have to have, um, uh, God, what am I thinking of the word, from the town clerk, it would have to be a vote, um, as well for debt exclusion.
You have to put it on the ballot, a debt exclusion requires a ballot vote in a town meeting, Bill.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a ballot to do a debt exclusion.
And there's enough money, there's enough free cash, I mean, you know you're gonna use it up and we, and I'm already writing down the totals based on what's going on. So with, there's enough free cash, you know, we always spend all the free cash really to, to fund capital projects and things of that nature. This year, we didn't do it, we have five hundred and maybe something thousand bucks left because of Shaw, right? So there's enough cash to do it.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready, motion to approve, uh, Article Seven?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Mr. Manad.
All right, thank you.
Dan, you wanna just state for one, for Ms. Tomlinson's, because we'll just, we'll, I'm gonna jump right to it. So the next one, gentlemen, we already voted, it's to do the water infrastructure in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not coming from taxation, this comes from the water, long surplus account in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on Nye Avenue. That water infrastructure's a hundred and twenty-five years old and we talked about starting to do water infrastructure with Mr. Manad at the last meeting. We're gonna tackle this project and we're gonna see how much work it is and if we have good success, we gotta stop moving on to all the other play. I think it's Clifford Street over here by, what's that, Cleveland Street?
Cleveland, always, this whole area.
That was all, but we said, we identified that one as a part of the pavement management thing and we said we wouldn't do that because of the old water infrastructure, right? So once we figure out what we're capable of doing and not capable of doing, um, maybe we move forward or maybe we get Board of Selectment in the future or come up with a plan to sub it out and do small pieces of all the old infrastructure at a later date. So is there a motion to approve article eight, even though we already did?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, Mr. Manad, I know you helped Ms. Tomlinson out on this. This is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds to sum of sixty thousand dollars for the purchasing of a two thousand twenty-one Chevrolet full-size K-15 Silverado pickup truck with a commercial utility cap for the use of the animal control officer. So I spoke with Ms. Tomlinson, um, she's on the quarantine right now, so we, we have a, tested negative though. We have a situation, um, where Ms. Tomlinson's run into numerous times and she's requesting a four-by-four vehicle because of the nature and scope of her business, the job that she has, she has to go out on farmland and mud and things of that nature. She's been stuck on people's properties before in the mud, um, she's been stuck on numerous times, I've talked to her, in the snow on with that vehicle and I know that she does work for other municipal powers. I think she had to go as the assistant to, I think, Lakeville we share with. She went out there and she had to get towed out by their DPW, um, off the side of the road because she was in a van, so. Um, the van's, I think it's a two thousand thirteen. So it's just a two-wheel-drive vehicle. When you, when you did this, you helped Ms. Tomlinson do this, the commercial utility cap.
Yep.
That's, that's pretty big in nature where it's got a big back door on it, she can get inside of there with, with animals like, you know, dogs and stuff like that. It's almost like a van.
But it's gonna have two, five doors on the back, like.
Yeah, it's encapsulated on the inside.
Correct.
And it's got some storage bins, I would assume, on the sides of this unit.
Yep.
And this incorporates all of those expenses, right?
Correct, the only thing that wasn't on there was the, the radio, so I don't know if we could be able to get it out of her van now and, you know, transfer it to this one or a new radio, which ain't that much money. And that money in there, actually, we'll cover that radio as well, any extras, that sixty thousand, because the vehicle, I think, is a little less than that.
Yeah.
So we needed a new radio, if it wasn't able to be transferred over or something.
Yeah, I, I talked to her last night and she said to me that, you know, it's, it's sixty thousand, but that's on, just because of the truck, it's the utility body and then other equipment that would need to be utilized for the vehicle.
People on the side, correct, yep.
So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Manad. You too. To see if, the next one, I intend to see if the town will vote and transfer from the golf course retained earnings, which is the surplus account, is that correct, Miss Hebert?
Yep.
Not to exceed eighty thousand dollars for the purpose of cop path work, replacement of leaking isolation shut-off valves irrigation system, additional sprinklers, sprinkler system coverage, replacement of fourteen-year-old bunker rake, replacement of fourteen-year-old grass leaf blower, replacement of leasing of fourteen nine-year-old golf carts and all other unnecessary and proper expenditures approved by the golf committee and the Board of Selectment or take any other action relative there to. And the golf retained earnings is two hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-one. They're asking for eighty thousand dollars for a whole host of things. Miss Hebert, the one question that I asked, um, in their budget, I didn't look at their budget before I got here, but in their budget, we hold a, as we do in the enterprise funds, a special reserve. Um, so we wouldn't have to go back to town meeting, God forbid we had an emergency and things of that nature. And I know, I think we carry a hundred thousand in the golf budget.
That's correct.
Um, with this number, the two hundred and ninety-nine that it says we have, is that including that hundred thousand that's in the budget? So they really have, they really have three hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Yep.
Well, gentlemen, I mean, they gave us a capital expenditure plans quite some time ago, um, and it was, uh, it was good that they did that, it was scary that they depleted all the reserve in six to seven, eight years out, but we're also, the debt, um, will be gone in two thousand twenty-seven, I believe, something like that.
I think so.
Um, so we just have to keep a careful eye on this surplus, but I think they're doing a lot of great things out at the golf course, so is there a motion to approve the expenditures?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, well, I know it's off, off topic here, but, um, you know, the golf season's gonna be winding down pretty soon and I really would like to get the, um, Golf Course Management Committee to come in, do an end-of-season, uh, wrap-up. But, you know, while we're on the subject today of curriculum development, master plan, I think the golf course, and I haven't seen one, um, but I think it might be, I think we should encourage them, the golf management committee, to embark on their own master plan, you know, a review of their business practices to see what the next ten years should look like or would look like or could look like, um, and I think that would be something that I, I'd like to see from the golf management committee. Um, I think it'd be important, you know, we did it when the golf course first opened up, but I don't know that we've done it since then, um, and I think time's now to do that, so. I mean, I just wanna put that on the record, that we can revisit that, we can hopefully revisit that when they come in at the end of the season.
We, we, um, just so you know, Mr. Wona, um, I worked with, uh, certain individuals on the golf committee, um, and then they worked with Mr. Marit and putting together some, some ideas related to clubhouse and I think that's what we are going.
Uh, that's about clever, whether or not we need one, but more about how we're gonna adapt to what this, you know, what golf is gonna look like, uh, you know, rounds of play, staffing levels, uh, making sure we've got best practices in place, uh, you know, for taking T-sheets, you name it, soup to nuts, um, how we're doing our procurement. I mean, I just saw, you know, there's an article about Allendale, um, how they, you know, they were going through some financial problems and they went through a soup-to-nuts review and they basically turned that golf course around. So I wanna make sure that we're going through the same, same practice.
All right, okay. Number twelve, we're just jumping over eleven, I'll go back to a gentleman once we get through the rest of them because I have a little list here I'm doing for finance and make sure we don't overexpend. Number twelve, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds or otherwise provide a sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be added to the OPEB fund as established according to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-two B, Section Twenty, as amended in Municipal Modernization Act, Chapter Two Eighteen of the Acts of two thousand sixteen and take any other action relative there too. Um, if we wanna do, if we wanna try to help the schools out with a couple of their curriculum, we can only fund fifty thousand dollars in Article Twelve. If the board so chooses.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't even, yeah, no, I just found this from last year, you know, we're putting fifty grand in and our liability is over sixteen million, but that may be for another day to discuss.
It will be.
So, uh, because at that rate, it's gonna be over two hundred years before we pay it off, so, uh.
Yeah, well, we'll talk about that in budget season, my friend.
You know, I understand, I understand we put in a little bit of money. It, it shows that we're trying to address this, uh, the financial liability that the town is facing, so, uh.
It's a li- it's a liability, it's across the Commonwealth and it's an ugly liability and it's something that we've created. It's been generations that have created this big mess. Um, I spoke intensively on OPEB for years, um, it's a, it's a disaster that it taxpayers.
It made me wanna run for, wanna run for selectmen.
Do you ever wanna cut this to fifty grand?
I, I, it's the only way that we can help the schools out and get them some curriculum, selectmen, Wona.
Okay, yep.
So fifty's better than nothing. Is there a motion to approve Article Twelve and change the dollar amount to fifty thousand dollars for the OPEB fund?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Miss Hebert, can you correct that article, please?
Yep.
Thirteen, uh, this is all CPCs, thirteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer appropriate sum of ten thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance of the Community Preservation Act funds account and/or fiscal year twenty-one budgeted reserves of the Community Preservation Act funds for the purpose of purchasing improvements in funding repairs to recreational equipment at Pope Park Playground and located at ninety-six Pope Park, Pope Street. So gentlemen, uh, this was tossed around last time around, last, uh, last, uh, town meeting, but we weren't taking any of this stuff due to the COVID-nineteen restrictions and things of that nature, but we know that the playground set at the Pope Park is, some of it's broken, um, outdated, whatever the needs are. Mr. LeClaire, the park commissioner, has been awesome over at the park department, um, doing the best that he can and making what we can out of what we can over there and he's asking basically ten thousand bucks. There's, um, motion to approve, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars roughly in CPC. There's a motion to approve by Selectman Wona, Mr. DeRoche, is there a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
To see if the town will vote to transfer an appropriate sum of seventy-five thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance of the Community Preservation Funds Account fiscal year twenty-one budgeted reserves of the Community Preservation Act funds for the purpose of improvements in cleaning efforts in the Lake Street Lakes and adjacent recreational grounds located on Lake Street. Mr. Selectman Wona, you have anything, any comments on this?
No, it's stuff we've talked about in the past, this, uh, you know, set aside the money to, um, to start cleaning the ponds and also do some other enhancement, safety enhancements. I think this, I know Merrill Lee submitted a grant application for fifty thousand. Um, this should get us off and running, um, we may have to come back in the spring, you know, again, this is gonna be, till we get this thing up and, you know, fully, uh, fully taken care of, but this should be enough for.
Has there been any, uh, cause right now we, we're just doing the testing.
Doing the testing and then, once we get the testing, we'll then be able to determine a mitigation plan.
Is there a motion to approve Article Fourteen?
So moved.
I'll second that, in case Mr. Wona feels uncomfortable doing it, but I don't think he does, but, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think it's a great project. Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer appropriate to sum of five thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance of the Community Preservation Act funds account and/or the fiscal year twenty-one budgeted reserves of the Community Preservation Act funds for the purpose of improvements of clean, cleaning efforts at the Acushnet River Park located on River Street. So it looks like five thousand bucks, we just did, uh, a project with Mr. Wona, uh, grant money. It was like thirteen thousand bucks, we did some improvements down there, um, nice work out there by the DPW. Yeah, it's just a little more spin shine on it, you know, maybe a few more tables, uh, canoe launch or something along those lines. So some picnic tables, candy benches, things of that nature, dress it up a little bit. Five thousand bucks, a motion to approve fifteen.
So moved.
I'll second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, gentlemen, we gotta go back to Article Eleven, which was the school, I believe it was Article Eleven, it is Article Eleven. Miss Hebert, if you've been keeping track, I, I believe there's seventy-seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars.
That's correct. That's correct.
So if we want, gentlemen, we can approve, she said the reading, um, would be nice and then the developmental is the only one left that you have, so if you take that, it's sixty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We can just round it up and make it sixty-six thousand bucks if she wants to leave it like this. Miss Hebert, what do you prefer?
Um, I mean, it.
The exact amount they requested?
I, I would, I would say you either give the full seventy-seven two forty-nine and give the, um, reading assessments, the reading curriculum, and then appropriate the, whatever small amount is left to science curriculum. Um, just because it's, if you don't do that, then you wanna do something with whatever free cash we have left over. Transfer to stabilization or, you know.
Yeah, just give it, give it just exhausted. So is there a motion to approve Article Eleven? Miss Hebert, you're gonna have to work with the school department to make sure that they do whatever they need to, to adjust these numbers in the form of the article.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve Article Eleven for the school's science curriculum, reading curriculum and developmental reading assessments in the amount of seventy-seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars?
Sub move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And just so you know, I'm working with town council. We're just cleaning up the articles. So you might see some slight changes with the wording from town council, um, but I'll make sure these updates are put in.
Gentlemen, I'm sorry to do this, but I have a hard stop at three o'clock.
We're done.
Merrill Lee had something going on or.
Merrill Lee, I apologize, we do, oh, wait a minute, let me get these. I apologize that we do, but two members of the board, myself and Selectmen Wona, um, we, we thought we'd be wrapped up in ninety minutes. We've been two hours, um, for some of this discussion, so we have an MS four update on the, on the agenda for Merrill Lee, Kelly, to give us an update. Um, we'll postpone that to a future meeting. Thank you, Ms. Merrill Lee.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, number three, we have on the new business, Board of Selectmen approval for the town administrators to be authorized to sign lease, the electrical vehicle lease agreements. So is there a motion to, to authorize Miss Hebert to sign the electric vehicle lease agreements?
Sub move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just got an adequate motion, Miss Hebert.
That's perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, no further business, gentlemen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned.